So we will call to order this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors' regular meeting. Mr. Powell?
Ms. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. McGlynn.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Ms. Sadler?
Here. Next on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Powell, Speaker Carson.
Speaker Carson.
All right, thank you. Next, we will have the consent calendar, which includes minutes adoption.
Motion for approval?
Thank you. All in paper?
Aye.
Any post that carries? Any public hearings, sir?
No, ma'am.
Good to go. Okay, board considerations. First, contract award, Phase Two. How do you say it? The acronym?
SCADA.
Thank you. Upgrade and System Integration.
Madam Chair, members of the board, JCSA's Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, known by the acronym SCADA, is a communication system that we use to communicate and control the 107 remote facilities that we have. Our SCADA system relies on copper wire, which is outdated technology, and necessitates the upgrades that are required by this proposal. In FY '17...
Excuse me, Mr. Powell, is your microphone on?
Your microphone?
I don't know how to work it.
There it is.
You're on.
Okay, okay, all right. In FY '17, the board approved a contract for Phase One, which was an upgrade for seven facilities. We contracted with a company, eMERGE, and the purpose of that pilot project was to evaluate the contractor's performance to make sure that we wanted to continue with Phase Two with that contractor. That contractor did successfully complete Phase One. We are now comfortable recommending going to Phase Two with eMERGE. This contract has a negotiated price for Phase Two of $2,317,876. Funds have been allocated in the CIP over a several-year period for this high-priority project. It is a three-year project to complete, and additional funds will be requested in the FY '21 CIP to complete the project. Staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing Phase Two of the SCADA upgrade to eMERGE Systems Incorporated in the amount of $2,317,876.
Questions from Mr. Powell or staff? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Powell?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye. I'm so sorry. Next, we have the contract award, Central System Corrosion Control Treatment. Mr. Powell?
In FY '18, the Service Authority started a corrosion control study to ensure continued compliance with the requirements of EPA's lead-in copper rule that requires JCSA to test its water and control pipe corrosion. Study is substantially complete at this point and recommended adding a corrosion inhibitor to all of our central system well facilities. Currently, the only facility we have that in place is at the Five Forks Water Treatment Plant. An RFP was advertised, and we've got two proposals. McGill Associates was chosen as the most fully qualified firm. They've completed similar projects and received satisfactory reference checks, and staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the award of the contract to McGill Associates in the amount of $146,100.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussion? All right, Mr. Powell, roll call.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Motion for approval?
Oh, motion for approval, sorry about that. Thank you. Next, I'll be looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 and Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Code of Virginia, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to case CL16-6000 Qualicon Corporation versus JCSA, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye. We are in closed...[399.83][399.83]106,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[429.83][429.83]42,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[439.83][439.83]42,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[449.83][449.83]42,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[459.83][459.83]42,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[469.83][469.83]42,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[479.83][479.83]42,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[489.83][489.83]42,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[499.83][499.83]42,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[509.83][509.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[519.83][519.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[529.83][529.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[539.83][539.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[549.83][549.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[559.83][559.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[569.83][569.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[579.83][579.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[589.83][589.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[599.83][599.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[609.83][609.83]52,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[619.83][619.83]62,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[629.83][629.83]62,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[639.83][639.83]62,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[649.83][649.83]62,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[659.83][659.83]62,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[669.83][669.83]62,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[679.83][679.83]62,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[689.83][689.83]62,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[699.83][699.83]62,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[709.83][709.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[719.83][719.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[729.83][729.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[739.83][739.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[749.83][749.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[759.83][759.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[769.83][769.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[779.83][779.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[789.83][789.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[799.83][799.83]72,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[809.83][809.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[819.83][819.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[829.83][829.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[839.83][839.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[849.83][849.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[859.83][859.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[869.83][869.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[879.83][879.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[889.83][889.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[899.83][899.83]82,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[909.83][909.83]92,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[919.83][919.83]92,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[929.83][929.83]92,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[939.83][939.83]92,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[949.83][949.83]92,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[959.83][959.83]92,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[969.83][969.83]92,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[979.83][979.83]92,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[989.83][989.83]92,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[999.83][999.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1009.83][1009.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1019.83][1019.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1029.83][1029.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1039.83][1039.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1049.83][1049.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1059.83][1059.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1068.83][1068.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1077.83][1077.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1084.83][1084.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1093.83][1093.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1102.83][1102.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1109.83][1109.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1116.83][1116.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1124.83][1124.83]102,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1132.83][1132.83]112,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1139.83][1139.83]112,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1146.83][1146.83]112,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1153.83][1153.83]112,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1162.83][1162.83]112,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1170.83][1170.83]112,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1178.83][1178.83]112,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1185.83][1185.83]112,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1192.83][1192.83]112,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1199.83][1199.83]119,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1206.83][1206.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1213.83][1213.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1220.83][1220.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1227.83][1227.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1234.83][1234.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1242.83][1242.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1249.83][1249.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1256.83][1256.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1263.83][1263.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1270.83][1270.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1277.83][1277.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1284.83][1284.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1291.83][1291.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1298.83][1298.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1305.83][1305.83]120,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1312.83][1312.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1319.83][1319.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1326.83][1326.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1333.83][1333.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1340.83][1340.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1347.83][1347.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1354.83][1354.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1361.83][1361.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1368.83][1368.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1375.83][1375.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1382.83][1382.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1389.83][1389.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1396.83][1396.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1403.83][1403.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1410.83][1410.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1417.83][1417.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1424.83][1424.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1431.83][1431.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1438.83][1438.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1445.83][1445.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1452.83][1452.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1459.83][1459.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1466.83][1466.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1473.83][1473.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1480.83][1480.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1487.83][1487.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1494.83][1494.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1501.83][1501.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1508.83][1508.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1515.83][1515.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1522.83][1522.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1529.83][1529.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1536.83][1536.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1543.83][1543.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1550.83][1550.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1557.83][1557.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1564.83][1564.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1571.83][1571.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1578.83][1578.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1585.83][1585.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1592.83][1592.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1599.83][1599.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1606.83][1606.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1613.83][1613.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1620.83][1620.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1627.83][1627.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1634.83][1634.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1641.83][1641.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1648.83][1648.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1655.83][1655.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1662.83][1662.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1669.83][1669.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1676.83][1676.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1683.83][1683.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1690.83][1690.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1697.83][1697.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1704.83][1704.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1711.83][1711.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1718.83][1718.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1725.83][1725.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1732.83][1732.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1739.83][1739.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1746.83][1746.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1753.83][1753.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1760.83][1760.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1767.83][1767.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1774.83][1774.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1781.83][1781.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1788.83][1788.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.[1795.83][1795.83]130,000 dollars less in revenue than we had budgeted.
not, right?
It is essential for this project, yes. Every project is different. You know, I don't know, I didn't, a tax credit application, Mr. McGlynn, has, you know, 50-some pages and multiple addendums, and I don't know how each of those competing projects achieve their level of points. They may have achieved them in other ways to get to the same, you know, scoring system, and what they lost in efficiency of their credit, they made up for in some other way. I will tell you, and, you know, as a preferred, experienced developer, Mr. Connolly and his team, and the consultant that he's hired specifically to evaluate this project and how to position it with the best chance of success in the most financially efficient and feasible way, has determined that the breakpoint is 119 units, the way this project scores out with the criteria that it has, and also the supplemental, you know, improvements that are required of the project. So, I mean, I can't, short of spending, you know, a couple of hours going through competing tax credit applications and determining what was relevant to those applications and their scoring, you know, I just can't discern the difference. I will just tell you that it is material to this project. If we could come up with a smaller project, right, that met your approval and still was financially feasible and achieved a tax credit award we thought would score highly, we'd be here proposing that. We've done the best we can with the tools we have to present to you the project that balances those criteria.
Okay, now, thank you for the information. And again, we're also trying to deal with the tools that we have in front of us that are very limited in scope, and trying to determine the relationship between project size and competitiveness for the tax credits. And so I hope you appreciate the spirit in which those questions are being addressed.
I do, Mr. McGlynn. And I'll just respond by saying, you know, it's easy to talk about these projects in terms of units and density in sort of an abstract way, but, you know, this project is designed to address a very stated and important goal of the county, which is to address the deficit and affordable quality of affordable housing. And each unit represents a family that could be served by this project. So it's...
That's absolutely, absolutely true. And it's also true that our responsibility is to try to address that problem as well as we can, and also to understand the implications of that decision on others in the community who may be affected.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the applicant? Does anyone have questions for staff? I have one question for staff, and actually, I'll direct it to the county attorney. Document we received, I think, today that listed the existing tax credit properties, O2 2019, the one that you sent by email.
Oh, that was the list from the Virginia Department of Housing?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is that, what timeframe does that cover? It lists like 99,000 properties. I don't, is this over a certain time, year period, or how far back does it go, or what?
I pulled that off the VHDA website. I don't know right off the top of my head, but I'll find it, or Mr. Trent knows it off the top of his head.
I believe, Mr. Eisenhower, that it represents all of the projects that are currently under the tax credit program in Virginia from the history of the program.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Would note that there were 1,254 properties on that list, and that 75% of them were 119 units or smaller. So I have a, I understand the intricacies of the scoring system may be beyond our comprehension in the short time period we have, but in looking at the existence of the program over a period of time, what's currently out there, it's pretty obvious that smaller places compete fairly well.
Mr. Chairman, the earliest date on there is 1990.
1990, okay. Thank you, that helps me. Any other questions? Okay. Look to the board for discussion. Go ahead.
First of all, again, thank you to everyone who has, who has participated in the process with us here on this application. I'm still looking at the school numbers as a huge concern for me. I've got a list here of Oakland Point projections, Village at Candle Station, Station at Norwich, the proposed Walnut Grove. Station at Norwich, I'm looking at the projection that came in at 28 schoolchildren. We currently have, from that project, 62 enrolled in our schools. Village at Candle Station, projection was 50 kids, current enrollment 42. They still have 80 more units that they need to complete, if I'm reading this correctly. Walnut Grove or Walnut Farms, projected at 41 kids. That's under construction now. The Oakland Point reduction in density lowers this down to 37 kids. And I'm still looking at development up in Stone House that was approved a long time ago, and I don't even know what the numbers are for that at this point. One of the things, of all the comments that I heard from folks, the one thing that resonated with me the most, I have to say, that came from a citizen, is that James City County needs to be more proactive rather than reactive. I think that that's the biggest concern that I have, is that I'm hoping that at some point we will have a full public facilities master plan where we can gauge what we're doing long-term, rather than reacting to each development that comes up, and the timing of this... ...of the schools. So, in our current enrollment, and the issues that we have right now with our current enrollment. So I'll just leave it at that for now, but those are the items that I've been looking at over the past week with this reduction in density. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me go ahead, and if I squeak my points out here, I'll do my best. Thanks. So I think everybody understands that we have a need to provide a wider range of housing choices, especially at price points that are affordable for folks newly into the workforce, young families, folks who earn lower wages, and that it's important for us to try to address that through a variety of means. I'm very supportive of finding those means. We have some preferred methods, which include mixed-income housing, which we have tried to do in a number of instances. We have tried to do it through supporting the development of neighborhoods through the dedication of county property for the creation of housing developments. We've done it through approval of projects that qualify for the LIHTC program. We have other ways in which we can address those issues as well, and I hope we will continue to pursue them. I like the concept of this project. I think it meets a lot of the requirements that we need to be concerned about. It is in the PSA. It does have service, not maybe, not as much as we would like, of public transit, but maybe that will stimulate more use of public transit. But there are still things about the scale of it that do give me pause, and those items include the disproportionate impact that this particular project would have on our schools, the amount of traffic that would be generated by this particular scale of development that can have a negative consequence for folks trying to utilize the Oakland Drive access to the project or to Richmond Road. I'm concerned about the lack of recreational facilities for a project which, though our own county numbers don't demonstrate it clearly, is obvious to me will produce a significant number of middle-school and high-school-age young people, and for whom there is really no amenity to provide for recreation. And the scale, the height of the project is out of scale of the local community surrounding immediately in that area. I think that there's always a concern about the unknown, the change that occurs in a neighborhood, and I do think that neighbors may have come to at least some conclusion that this project serves a good purpose, but that a significant number of those neighbors have indicated that the scale of the project is still too great for them to feel a level of comfort. So I think that, as we look at this particular project, my hope in addressing this issue at our last meeting was that the developer might see an opportunity, recognizing that projects of a smaller scale of units have had great success in the LIHTC program, that something of a more modest scale that would be accommodated more easily into this neighborhood could be much more acceptable, much more widely beneficial, and underscore the fact that no one project is going to solve the problem. This project does relatively little for what we might describe as the homeless population of James City County. This project has limited impact on those who earn a minimum wage salary or just barely above that. And that's okay. There are still others that will be benefited by this program, but it doesn't solve everything. And I think in some ways, we've kind of gotten wrapped around the idea that this project is our solution to workforce housing and affordable housing in James City County. I think a more manageable scale sets a better example. I think there are lots of good opportunities for us to move ahead, and so I'd at least like for us to think about the question of whether some more modest scale of development wouldn't be appropriate for this particular parcel. And so I'd just ask my colleagues on the board to think about that and perhaps reflect on whether that makes any sense to them.
So what would you be proposing?
Well, I think to just pull a number from the air would be, would be hard to do, but I would, you know, I think that projects that I've seen the applicant deal with, and the projects that appear to be able to achieve success in the grant program, in the tax credit program, have generally been somewhere in the 70 to 85 range. So I would think maybe something around 80 units would allow for a real bite at the apple in terms of providing additional inventory, and at the same time, be of a scale that would reduce the impact on the adjacent areas. I'm just suggesting, that particular number, you know, it's not any magic.
Jump in on that one item. You were just stating that it has little impact on homeless and our workforce or people that can afford in James City County. So if we make it smaller, we're going to get even less. It seems like we're going backwards instead of forward. I would think if it's not doing that, I would look at more dense in order to help more people, not take away more to get, to help less people.
I'll just clarify, I'm talking about the income qualifications.
Correct. So if we make them less, we're going to have less qualified.
No.
Correct.
No.
You would have to.
Well, I'm saying that the people who would not qualify for the program at all would not be served by this project.
Well, we've looked at this project in several different ways. We've looked at it, will it do this, will it do this, will it take care of the homeless, will it take care of workforce? No, it's not. It's not going to totally take care of anything. But if we continue on this board to sit and not try to find other, not saying we're not, but not trying, and this discussion is a good part of that, and that's why I enjoy the board so much, because we can have good sides on each thing and come out with a dynamite decision. But if we don't start now, when? I keep saying that, and that's very important. This is a start, not a completion, not a we're going to take care of everything. I think almost each one of us sat on Workforce Housing Development Task Force, and we said, these are the things we need, these are the things we want to do, this is how we want to do them, and we don't have all the answers, we never will. But we've all sat there and said, what do we need to do for our community that can't? And we've got a project that I feel we can with a start. Now, this won't be the only project. It will be others integrating in neighborhoods and that sort of thing, like we're doing now. It's just one other tool in our toolbox to build what we need to build as James City You know, if, I've heard so much of "not in my backyard." You know, when my dad bought the land in '61, if he said "not in my backyard," 99% of us wouldn't be here. But we are here, and I enjoy a lot of the neighbors that I meet and see and that had never grown up in James City County but moved here and enjoy James City County, and that's why they're so passionate about it. And that adds to my life and enriches me, and, you know, sometimes you agree, sometimes you don't, but it's that mix of everybody. Now, do I want to overbuild James City County? Of course not, and everyone knows that. But I think this is a stab at workforce development and trying to get housing of what we need. I mean, each one of us love to go out and eat, but I do not want the person waiting on me living next door, is what I'm hearing. And that's not James City County, that's not us at all. Yeah, we're not that. We're not Northern Virginia, we're not Washington, we're James City County. I mean, we're a county that loves each other. Even when we do something wrong against something, we still have that love. You know, I hear, how far can we take it down, and is the project going to make any money? Well, that's the private sector's thing, and I'm not for helping the developer or anybody else make money. That's up to them and figure out how they can make money. But I know if I cut something to a certain point, I've cut the lifeblood right out of it, and it can't be done. I know with a house, if I cut it to a certain point, there's no need in building it. Have a nice day, I'll see you later. We've got projects that are coming to our doors that we're asking for, and now we're not, we're saying, no, never mind. You know, and to me, that's awful hard, sitting on this board, asking for the things that we've asked for, and then to wonder, can we cut it a little less? Can we have a little less here? Can we have a little less there? And smaller, will it make it? Well, we asked for that, went back and said, I can cut X. I would think if the developer could cut any more, they'd have cut any more in order to make sure that this project, I can at least squeak through. And I can compare it to his other projects, because it's like me comparing building in Kings Mill, Ford's Colony, and then in Lenexa. It, I can do different in each area, and it depends on what each one cares for and wants. So there, you've got to add all those into the scenario. Proactive, I heard, and that's always a good word to use when you're not getting your way on something, and the county's not proactive. There's a lot of things we need to do, there's a lot of things on this board we need to do, but I feel we're very proactive on the board, trying to, you know, move things forward and get things out and do what we need to do. That's why we put a strategic plan in place. That's why we do workforce housing development. That's why we're looking out for our neighbors that may not, may need a hand up. I remember when Burt Getty put his project up there in Tuana that I've heard a lot of comment on, 40 years plus, and there hasn't really been much trouble up there. Every now and then there'll be something, just like any neighborhood. I can find some worse things in great neighborhoods. It just happens, we're people. But that's been a good project. It's served a need up in the Tuana area. It's nestled back off the road. Unless you know it's there, you don't know it's there. And I've heard a lot about that, and I'll tell you one thing, Burt and I talked, and he caught a lot of grief, and I remember that, when he put that project together. "How dare you, you bring that in our neighborhood, you bring them in our neighborhood, you bring this in our neighborhood?" And I'm like, "Really? I brought our neighbors in our neighborhood? That's what was brought in. They're our neighbors." So is, it's, I'm always so common sense on a lot of things. So it's, I'm always so common sense on a lot of things, and I'm pretty straightforward. As the board knows, I'm pretty quick to sling it out there and let it go. And, you know, to me, this is a project that we need in James City County, and I would like to see that if this project goes, maybe we have another project, something like this, similar to this, I don't know if the same group, another group in another part of James City County, and kind of move it around James City County and fill those needs. We've said we need apartments, townhouses, we need little houses, we need big houses. We talked about campsites, we talked about trailers, we talked about bringing back mobile homes. We've talked about all of these in this board and in the workforce housing development. I mean, there for a while, mobile homes were banned in James City County. That was a boogaboo, we don't want mobile homes. And, you know, we're talking about, do we need to look at a mobile home park? Do we need to look at a campsite, refurbishing campsite, so we can get people so that they can live here in James City County, have a startup? Well, this is a wonderful project as far as the build, the structures, the look, everything. And Oakland, I can understand, you know, your concern with it being close to your neighborhood and all that, and what you've wanted in your neighborhood. I mean, on Jolly Pond, we thought that nobody would be building around us either. And Windmill Estates is right there, right in our backyard, goes right next to the land. And, you know, there's some nice people in Windmill Estates. They're good people, they're our neighbors, and, you know, it was a cornfield when I got here. And the house that was there, the people lived in, they farmed the land and everything else, and it changed, just like everything else has changed in James City County. And it'll continue to change. You know, we've asked the owner and the developer to jump through some hoops, and every time we've asked them, you know, we don't, the road coming down to the bottom, that was a safety hazard, there's no defense about that. Coming out of the old entrance, it was, it was a, it would have been a tough sale. They said, okay, let's look at it, let's put the road over here, let's bring out through the neighborhood, let's open everything up, let's plant certain grasses in order to get a better view, so we can get better opening than that. It's still, right now, y'all, your neighborhood is tough to get out of. And these improvements are going to help getting out of that neighborhood. Now, you know, you've got the other that goes along with it, and I see some shaking their head, yes, it will improve, but I don't want it in my yard, I understand that. I don't blame, I mean, I have no fault on what your thoughts are and all that and what our decision is up here today. But as you know, I've always been the type to tell it like it is and tell what I'm thinking, and always will. But I think this is a good project in James City County. I think it's one of our tools that we can use in our toolbox to make this work. There's, you know, we're limited on how many things we can do and what we can do as a board, and we're trying our best to get the best projects in James City County and utilize them for all our citizens, not just the wealthy, but the ones that are just starting out. And I'm talking about, you know, my children, you know? There could be a spot for them in there. And there's that opportunity. So, you know, that's my two cents on it. And regardless of whatever happens up here tonight, I hope that all of us citizens will always respect each other and learn we're all in the same community. We're James City County, we're different anywhere else. Thank you.
Anything to add?
No.
The only thing I would say is, this is a sorely needed project in our community, but it comes at a cost. It comes at a cost to the taxpayers. That's what has been so difficult about wrestling with this, is benefit worth the cost? If you want to look at it from the big picture, we've got about 32,000 houses in James City County, and our schools have something a little over 10,000 students. We also have about 15,000, roughly, give or take, more homes that could be built by right without any legislative action on the part of this board. We have no idea when they're going to occur. Some could be built next year, some could be built 20 years from now, some could never be built. But if you assume that they all get built, that adds about another 5,000 students to our school system. How many schools is that? We wrestle every time we build a school. It's a fight. It's expensive. So those are the things I'm really concerned about. I will tell you that I think this board needs to look at something in the longer term after this. The figure that came out of 450 children in our community that are technically homeless, living in motel rooms that are in our school system, something that should keep us all up at night. That's something we should not allow to continue. I don't know whether we have the resources or the ability to deal with it as effectively as we would like to, but I think we need to take a short, very hard look at it. We need to look at affordable housing. We have had programs in the past that dealt mostly with purchase, very little with rental, although we do have a reasonable stock, about 850 of these LIHTC places in the county right now. This project would add about 15% to that. But it doesn't, it just makes a small dent in the project. And what we've got to do is we've got to look long term. If you wanted to have another project like this, where do you put it? We've had them take a look at available places that are already zoned, and they're just a very few. And the people who own them may not want to put this kind of project on it. So we have to take a look at how we're going to start with a comp plan, how we're going to designate property, where we want to put it, and I think we're going to have to look very carefully at rental housing. I think this whole thing has to tie together in how we do a better job of taking care of our folks here in James City County. This has been one of the most difficult cases I've had to wrestle with for a while. let it go at that.
Ready for a motion?
So let me just make sure that I understand. Doesn't sound like there's interest in moving ahead with any consideration of a different number.
I would support that.
I wouldn't.
So I don't know if you want to make, I mean...
What if, if y'all, if this goes down its path and it collapses, they pull out? We're, you know, there's an option that... I'd just vote on it myself, but, you know, we've asked them to go back and look, and they've looked. Now we're going to come back and ask them again to go back and look. I would think that if they did their homework, they looked to see what they could cut. And I'm worried we're going to lose an opportunity to, once again, do anything with workforce housing. That's what I'm worried.
I guess I would just ask if we could take a short recess to just have an opportunity to get a response, a reaction.
Okay. With the concurrence of the board, we'll take about a five-minute recess. Mr. Trent, would you have anything to add to it?
I do, Mr. Eisenhower, and just say in all candor that, you know, we made a good, I mean, we heard you at the last board meeting, and we made a good faith effort to try and squeeze the economics of the project to find the lowest density that would achieve a financially feasible and a project that could also, we feel, compete and score highly enough to be awarded the tax credits. And without that, we wouldn't have a project. We could commit to a lower number of units, an arbitrary number. We'd looked at models in the 96-unit range, and the cost feasibility and the scoring was such that it would not achieve what we thought was a financially feasible project or a project that would score high enough in the rankings to be funded as a tax credit project. And so the 119 was our sort of, you know, best effort at trying to strike the balance with what the board requested and the community impacts. Just to add to that, you know, a lot of the projects in the smaller scale, as you may have seen, are rehab projects where their cost basis is different than a new construction project. They may be projects on smaller pieces of land that have, you know, less land cost, projects that have other efficiencies in them, projects that are entitled, that don't have to go through a rezoning process like this. You know, rezoning of this magnitude, it's not unique to this project, you know, over 300 grand in soft costs just to get through a rezoning process. So obviously, to disappoint this board is to walk away from a very big number, and it's a huge financial impact to the client and to the Connerlys, and not something they do or want to do lightly. It's, just with all the costs that are imposed on a project through a rezoning, construction costs, as I mentioned, you know, forbear for off-site stormwater, traffic improvements, extensive traffic improvements that are required now that are needed without regard to this project, and that this project would bring to the table, those all increase the cost that some of the smaller projects, I would guess, do not have to bear.
I'll tell you two things. They say never go against the advice of your attorney, and I'm doing that right now. But, you know, I do appreciate that each one of you have struggled with this, and it's been a very difficult decision, and I understand that. But I will also tell you about me, I'm a terrible poker player, okay? We did go back, we tried very hard. We, each one of these developments are like fingerprints. They're all unique, they're all different. To take an average of all of them only gives you a different answer. We go through these, the applications are 30-some-odd pages, everything you change changes a figure, changes a calculation, and we have to take the feasibility of all the dynamics of the project and make it match to see if we've got a deal that works and if it's going to score well enough to win. That's my job, and that's what we do. It's a gamble, it's a risk, we do it every day. But I will tell you with this development, this is the only development that I have ever had this much improvement in infrastructure that was requested. Now, realize there's a reason for that, it's to help with traffic, but I think we've gone beyond helping with traffic. I think we've helped site distance, we've committed to that. I think that the, we don't have just one turn lane, we often have to put in one turn lane, but we've got two turn lanes, an extended turn lane, another taper. Those all add cost to this development. The property is 14 acres. To cut this down, to put 80 units on 14 acres, nobody does, I mean, that doesn't work, but, I mean, it's, you can see that day in and day out, people buy the amount of property they need. I don't blame Mr. Marston. If we cut off part of that property to reduce to 80 units or whatever, what's he going to do with the remaining property? He's held that property, they've paid taxes on that property, so that's a difficult ask of a seller. And I think he's held the main, you know, a high reputation in the community for years. So I'm giving you the best answer I can. We've looked at everything we can. I'm telling you, as a business professional and somebody that has built over, developed over 40 of these and built thousands of units, that this is what we think it would take to get it awarded. We've tried to come to the table when we've been asked to make adjustments, make provisions to make it less of an impact on the public, we've done that. And, you know, I hate that it may not be enough. But I will tell you that we've gone into other municipalities, and they have the same affordable housing issues that are in James City County, and that's the exact same things. We're called to consult, and we do it for free, offering ways and ideas. They come to the table with pilot payment in lieu of tax programs. They come to the table with offering to do dollar-a-year leases for property, for land, things that reduce the cost, not add to the cost of the development. So I understand you have a tough decision to make, you're struggling with what existing residents want and a population need that is huge. And as Mr. Hippel said, we've got this workforce group of folks, everybody wants to complain about traffic, and it happens everywhere. I've had a subdivision that was just approved near my house, it's going to be over 400 houses in that subdivision. And they didn't have to pay any additional fees or anything, and those residential homes are driving through the nucleus areas where the businesses and the restaurants and everything are, and that's where the traffic impact comes from. I have never had one of my developments where we've had folks waiting to turn out, we do all the traffic studies and everything, and I can just tell you, we've never had a traffic issue getting in and out of our complexes. And I've also, as far as the comment about good people or bad people or what they make or what they don't make, I've never had a municipality come back to me and say, you know, that was a terrible idea for you to build this community here. It's quite the opposite. We've got communities that they're like, this is amazing, this has been a, you know, you did a great job, you served a need that was huge. And we're like on tours, the mayor has tours, and they'll go through and visit the property and see what affordable housing is, because most people have a very different conception or understanding of what affordable housing is. And they drive through our facilities, and they're like, I can't believe this is affordable, I thought this was market rate. So I'm sorry if it wasn't enough, we tried the best we could. But I guess we'll have to see what you guys think. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. I'll look to the board for a motion.
Motion for approval of the project.
Clarification on the number of units.
The, was it down to?
119.
119.
Is everybody ready? Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Mrs. Scholes, no.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Kears?
We will now recess the board to the work session in the workroom, take about five minutes to send change over and set up.
Next item is the, let's see, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission Demographics Presentation. And Greg, I'll let you say your last name.
Go ahead.
I want to hear it.
Greg Garst.
Greg Garst, okay. Good.
I was waiting for it. Mr. Chairman, Greg is here on our behalf, he's the chief economist for the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. He presented some information last fall that Mr. Hippel and I thought would be beneficial to you as well, it's a lot of information that continues to evolve, and Greg said he was going to move pretty quickly, so if you have questions, you ought to raise your hand and slow down, I'll keep going. With that, Greg, we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, very much a pleasure to be here this evening. I do have 35 slides, and I've got like 15 minutes, so I'm going to fly through this, stop me, back me up, do whatever you want, but I'm going to try plow on through this pretty quick. Essentially, what this is, is, you know, we talk about economic forecasts and what our expectations are for the coming year and the future. Really forecasting is, well, when you see economic forecasts, they always miss their target, they're never on target because we don't know what's going to happen. So what's much more beneficial, I think, is just to give kind of a lay of the landscape as it is right now, looking at a few items to determine, you know, what we could expect to see in the coming years. So the focus of this is really on Hampton Roads. And I'll start with a look at the nation. It used to be that Hampton Roads, whatever happened at the national level... It used to be that Hampton Roads, whatever happened at the national level, really followed through at Hampton Roads, so if the, the nation was doing good, so was Hampton Roads. It's kind of decoupled in the last decade, but if we're going to look to the nation real quick, we can see, this is the U.S. gross domestic product, going back to the Great Recession all the way to 2009, you can see we're at 24% from the recession low. We look at the headline employment numbers, civilian, non-farm employment, this is what you hear from month to month when they're talking about what happened over the past month with respect to employment, but you can see there's just been a very strong and consistent trend, month over month, of employment growth, 1.7% at the national level since the Great Recession. If we look at the unemployment rate, the rate itself is actually kind of useless. What is important here is the trends and the underlying factors that, that we use to determine what the unemployment rate is, but essentially, we've come down from the national level, we had an unemployment rate of 10%, we're down to 3.9% now. Last month, actually, we bumped up from 3.7% to 3.9%, it was a good bump up, it was a bunch of people joining the labor force, that's really what we want to see, but essentially, we're at full employment at the national level right now. The stock market, not too much to say on that, we're up 280% from the pre-recession low, 8% from the pre-recession high even with the delays correction, but essentially, what you're looking at is all four of these factors show that the nation has really come back from the Great Recession and has experienced a pretty long growth trend. We compare that to Hampton Roads and Virginia now. Essentially, what you're looking at on the chart is when we entered into the Great Recession, the green line is Hampton Roads, the orange one is Virginia, the black is the U.S., and it's specifically looking at civilian employment. And so when it dipped down below the red line is when we started losing employment and how long it took to recover. And if you look at the orange and black line, the number of months it took to recover the employment that was lost, the nation and the Commonwealth both recovered the employment they lost from the Great Recession in 2014. Hampton Roads, you could see a couple of things, first of all, the line is longer, that's because Hampton Roads actually entered in recession before the nation and the Commonwealth did. We entered in recession when the Ford plant closed, so that's why we're about six, seven months earlier. And also, it's taken us a lot longer to come back out of it, it took us until April of 2018, an additional four years to just regain the jobs that we had lost. And if, if you're looking at the gross product component, here we are, you can measure it from year to year here, so it's adjusted for inflation, but our gross product in Hampton Roads in 2007 was 83.6 billion, that's in $2,009. In 2017, it was 81.8 billion, we're actually down 2.1%. So the region has had some, some significant difficulties recovering from this Great Recession. If we compare.
Can I interrupt about the employment numbers?
Sure.
Composition of the workforce, has that changed in terms of?
Absolutely.
Average salaries, is that something you're going to be?
Absolutely, and I'll talk about composition in just a little bit. If we look at the, the gross product at Hampton Roads, so we compare it to other metropolitan areas, we can see down there, Milwaukee, Rochester, Tucson, St. Louis, they have, they have fared a little worse off than we have over the past three years, but by and large, if we compare ourselves to competitor metropolitan areas, those are metro areas between 1 and 4 million like Hampton Roads, we compare very poorly. So here we start looking at the composition of, of the workforce, specifically by industry here. So what's happened over the past 10 years, over the past decade, certainly has not been a similar experience across the industry, local government has taken a significant hit over the past decade, construction is nowhere near where it was, information, wholesale trade, real estate leasing, manufacturing, they've all seen declines. Meanwhile, up top there, you have healthcare, tourism, federal government, scientific and technical services, have all seen employment growth in Hampton Roads. If we take that, we just switch that up a little and say, okay, so from the Great Recession, we've actually seen a, a slow increase of 57,000 jobs from where we were. Where has the, a lot of the good news come from? Well, there it's backing up on me here, it's come in the past year. So in the past year, you can see that, just that end part there, we've seen significant growth in the last year, 2018, almost 10,000 jobs, and pretty, pretty much a really a straight line towards recovery there. So if you look at those jobs, where have we got jobs out of the last year in Hampton Roads? Again, scientific and technical has been really good, tourism as well, manufacturing, which, which has been a bright light, we've been really looking forward to replacing those jobs, transportation utilities, and then on the, on the bottom end there, where we've actually seen some, seen some job losses in information, education services, administration, and a little bit of loss in the federal government as well. So the unemployment rates that I just told you I didn't really care about, but the, the trends are important. Here you can see how Hampton Roads, the green line compares to both the U.S. and Virginia, and essentially, the trends are the same, and they're not just the same across the, the nation and the Commonwealth, but they're also the same across gender, socioeconomic status, education status, race, essentially across all components of, of society, we've seen a decline in unemployment rates, which is fantastic news. But if we're looking specifically at the labor force, this, this chart is supposed to look really boring, the whole point of it is just to show you, here's the employed versus the unemployed, you take that little red area, you divide it by the whole, and that's your rate. So the point I really wanted to make with this is if we look at the unemployed in Hampton Roads and just sheer term numbers, we can see in 2010, there were 63,000, and currently, there are 28,000 people who are unemployed, that's a 55% decrease in terms of the number of people that are unemployed. So this means kind of a couple of things, but what I wanted to show you is if we took the long-term average number of people that are unemployed, and we compared it to where we are now, or if we took the long-term average rate of people that are unemployed, either way, right now, we are below the, the long-term average of number of unemployed and below the average rate. So what that does is that puts upward pressure on wages and salaries, because at some point, we've reached full employment here and we need to start competing across occupations and industries to, to attract people into new jobs, other jobs, and that's fantastic news for Hampton Roads, I'll get back to that a little bit more in a second. If we look at the labor force too, it's going to put upward pressure on the labor force. So you can see between 2000 and 2008, we saw our labor force grow pretty strong, and then we had almost a 10-year period of very slow growth, and now we're starting to see some, some growth back in the labor force, which is great news for the Hampton Roads economy. When I start talking about upward pressure on wages, this is why it's important. So what you're looking at here is income in Hampton Roads compared to the U.S., so anytime we're under that black line, that means that we are below the U.S. rate. The green line is per capita income, the blue bars are average wages and salaries, which are significantly below. And you can see in 2009, at least with respect to per capita income, we actually jumped up above the, the U.S. national average. The funny thing is, that year Hampton Roads actually saw a 2% decline, the nation just happened to see a 4% decline, so we jumped up above when we compared to them, but this is not really good news for Hampton Roads, and we can see how our incomes have been sliding, the per capita income and the average wages and salary. And what we'd like to see is really some upward pressure on there, so low, low unemployment rates should certainly help at least stem that decline. If you were to ask me, what would I rather have, a high median family income or a high per capita income as we see here, I would prefer a high median family income, and that's one of the bright spots in Hampton Roads. When we actually look at the median family income, the region compares quite well. The reason I think this is better is because it, it really tells us how the average family is doing compared to the nation, and our average family, the, the families right in the middle there, compare relatively well to the national average, which is a good thing, of course, we want to keep an eye on this and make sure that we continue to perform well there.
So does this exclude some people?
It doesn't exclude people, but it's essentially a different way of looking at it. For example, if you take total income, per capita income, that's you throw all the income in a box and you divide it by the number of people. So if you have a high income disparity, that can really skew the numbers, and it does skew the numbers for both the state and the nation, because you have some huge high-income earners, which kind of skew it to make it look like, you know, people are doing better off than they actually are. Not everybody's Bill Gates, not everybody has that income. So if you have more or less disparity between the haves and have-nots, you'll see that in the median family income here. And less disparity typically coincides with better quality of life across the region, and that's something we certainly see in Hampton Roads.
This is all civilians still?
The median family incomes is everybody.
Everybody, so includes military?
Yes, great question. Speaking of non-civilians, this is, clearly Hampton Roads is, has been very tied to the Department of Defense and what happens in Washington, and this is actually annualized defense outlays, you can compare across years here because the dollars are inflation-adjusted, but essentially, what I'm showing you here is how cyclical, how cyclical it is with respect to defense expenditures. And I want to point to you where we are with the Vietnam War, the 80s Cold War buildup, and the War on Terror, and you can see how the Vietnam War, just coming off the late 60s there, we saw a decline, and then we turned it around, had the 80s Cold War buildup and the War on Terror. Now, I want, want to talk about that just a little bit here, the data points aren't quite the same, but essentially, you can see from the late 60s there, coming off the Vietnam War, we saw a decrease in military personnel, and then we had the 80s Cold War buildup where there was a bump, and it started coming down, and then we had a War on Terror, which you can see a huge bump in spending, but there's no bump in military personnel, and that's because we really started changing the way that the DOD spent money. We used to spend money on military personnel, we did in these areas, in the War on Terror, we started investing money in technology, so the money was spent, but it did translate into military personnel. And if you look at Hampton Roads, we could go back to 1969 here as well, we talked a lot about diversification, how we need more diversification in Hampton Roads. Back in 69 fully, over a quarter of direct employment was military employment, and almost 25% was of, of the region's income was military income. Compare that to today, we're both are less than 10%. So there has been a significant shift away from military personnel and income in terms of the region's economy, still very heavily dependent on it, but, and then this is just direct spending, but over the years, we have diversified away from it somewhat. So when we look at what happened, if I want to take you back to remembering this one here, where we're talking about the War on Terror, and we look at that and say, okay, what happened with defense contracts? We lost military personnel, but we saw a huge bump in defense contracts, and we saw that in Hampton Roads right up until 2011. 2011 was where the federal government essentially pulled out a gun, aimed it at their own foot and said, if we can't get along, we're going to shoot ourselves in the leg, and they couldn't get along, and they shot themselves in the leg, and we, we put through sequestration, which really, really tied their hands in terms of any strategic pathway to, to cutting expenditures. And when that happened, we saw defense contracts cut in Hampton Roads, and when we saw the defense contracts cut, then what we had was an outgoing military personnel exacerbated by defense contracts, which is why it has taken Hampton Roads so much longer, the additional four years, to recover from the Great Recession, because essentially, we've been swimming against an outstream of federal dollars. That's what's made it so difficult, so. When we look to the future, this is, this is just going to be ugly, I'll just say that right now, here's the President's Budget of 2012. The President's Budget is essentially useless, it's the presidential wish, wish list, but the President does not hold the purse strings, but it kind of gives a baseline of where we thought, okay, this is where defense expenditures would be. Then what we had in, in the Budget Control Act of 2011 was a departure from that, and this is where sequestration set in, and we said, okay, we're going to put budget caps in place that are going to limit our defense expenditures. Then we had the American Taxpayer Relief Act of 2012, which kicked the can down the road a little bit, lifted the budget cap somewhat, and we kicked the can down the road a little bit more in 2013, and kicked the can down the road again in 2015, and finally, in 2018, we had some pretty significant legislation that lifted some of the, the caps and allowed us to spend money. And so this is what we see coming out of the Congressional Budget Office, and this is what they say they were going to spend, of course, here's what they actually spent, this includes oversea contingency operations, so it's very difficult to determine what they're actually going to spend. But what we do know, and what is important, is we look at this orange line and it returns us to the budget caps that were in place originally, and that's going to expire in 2020. And the reason this is important is because that legislation is real and requires bipartisan action to move from that, and bipartisan action has been somewhat difficult as of late. So moving on really quick, I'm just going to talk very briefly about the ports. Ports are fantastic at Hampton Roads, here's imports and exports, one of the things that's really interesting about this is it tracks almost perfectly with global trade, so as more global trade happens, there's more cargo at the port, as trade cuts, we see less cargo at the ports. Essentially, what we could say is containers are up, the number of ships are down, because ships are huge, and they have more containers on the ships, and the share of cargo that's going through the East Coast ports has remained relatively constant in Hampton Roads. So our port is, is strong and competitive and is a, a strong part of our economy here in Hampton Roads, and we expect this to continue down the road. Talking real briefly on tourism here, this is one of, you know, another pillar of the region's economy. One of the things that's interesting about tourism in Hampton Roads is basically, this is a very mature industry in Hampton Roads. We have the historical triangle, we have bush gardens, we have the beaches, we have the reasons people come here, those reasons aren't really changing. So, you know, if you look back to 2007 and you had the 400th anniversary of James Downey, you know, you saw a pretty, that, that was kind of coupled with a, a strong calendar year for tourism, and then we saw some cuts after that, but we've recovered, certainly it's not all of the same shared experience across Hampton Roads, but an increase of 13.2% with a couple of strong years has been good for us. This is going to be an insured industry, we're not expecting to see Disneyland here or something like that, which is going to alter significantly, it's just going to remain a very important part of the region's economy. Interestingly enough, hotel revenue over the past 10 years is down 2.9%, while employment is up 6.6%. So how do we see 13.2% growth in expenditures, 6.6% growth in employment, and a decline in hotel revenue? Well, vacation rental by owner, Airbnb, people are still coming to the region, people are still making their stays, they're just changing how they do it, and it's one of those really important things, we need to track with technology, a lot of times, you know, we'd like to buck the trend and we've got our, our tax revenues nailed down to certain things, but people are going to, you know, one economist pointed out, there's a lot of localities that have banned Airbnb, the only problem is people don't know it, and Airbnb doesn't know it, because you can certainly still go there and get Airbnb, people are going to do this stuff anyways, so I think at some point, you just got to find a way to make it work, and we'll still get the benefits from expenditures there. Real quickly, Hampton Roads retail sales, we're up 26.5% from where we were pre-recession. One of the, the interesting things about retail sales here is we've seen an annualized growth rate of 1.2% since 2006. Once we adjust that for inflation, it's a decrease of 1.1%, and this is really important for the localities, because next to real estate, this is one of the, the highest components of where our localities get their budget. Essentially, what we have here is we've hitched our wagon to an old horse, and the horse is getting older. People are spending less and less money on retail goods and more and more money on services, and we don't tax services. You go to the store, you buy a diaper, you spend tax, you tax money on that, you go get your hair done, and you don't spend any tax on that. So the people who are spending a lot more of their income on services are getting a tax break, while people who are stuck buying a pair of jeans are paying taxes on it. And as long as we do not modernize the tax system, it's going to become increasingly difficult for localities to pay for the services that their, their residents demand when we don't do any type of tax modernization here. There was a study done, I think it's probably six years ago now, that said if we kept, if we remained revenue neutral and we were to tax services in the same way we tax goods, we could bring the tax rate down to 1%. So you'd have a 1% across-the-board tax rate for goods and services that everybody would pay instead of what we're paying now. So something to think about when the tax modernization issue comes up. Really quickly, it might have, I'm just going to fly through housing here real quick. Hampton Roads had a bit of a different experience than the nation and the Commonwealth when it came to housing. Our housing prices went up faster, came down at the same rate, and now we're, we're struggling a little bit. The reason we went up faster is because housing in Hampton Roads was undervalued, and many of the same things that contributed to the, the boom nationwide, the low tax, the low mortgage rates. rates and easy access ninja loans, they were called, no income, no job, get a loan. So a lot of those same benefits were felt in Hampton Roads, but we had undervalued housing, but we also had a huge increase in military payroll and housing allowances that made the region flush with money. So housing prices went up, now we're kind of bumbling around the bottom. We look at the housing market now in terms of settled sales, we're doing great. We've really pulled out of that. It seems like we have a healthy real estate market. Look at the average sole time on market, okay, so we look at this, this is all good news, we're right where we should be, that has recovered to an extent. Here's where it gets a little interesting. Housing permits in Hampton Roads have dropped. They're well below long-term averages. So what you would normally think is, okay, if I'm an economist, I'm looking at supply and demand, so I'm restricting supply here by not having permits, so that's going to increase housing prices. Why aren't people seeing housing prices increase? Well, they are and they aren't. And the way that they aren't, if we look at the foreclosure market in Hampton Roads and we compare to the same metropolitan areas, we have a high number of foreclosures in Hampton Roads, which is going to put downward pressure on housing prices, a significant downward pressure on those prices. So for limited permits, we're not building new product, and we've got downward pressure on prices from foreclosures. And where are we seeing the costs going up? Well, what we're seeing the costs going up is essentially with the rental markets. And that's one of the things you're probably very familiar with. The rental market, especially people across the region, are having an incredibly difficult time finding affordable housing. And this is true in the metropolitan area here. When we compare across metropolitan areas, one of the standards is if we look at people who are paying greater than 30% of their income towards rent, Hampton Roads compares very unfavorably there because there's a lack of affordable housing in Hampton Roads. And it's going to get worse. Looking really quick at population, if you can go back and you remember the one that showed the Vietnam War, 80s war on terror, and you remember the Vietnam War in the 60s, there we saw, for that decade, we saw pretty significant population growth there of 1.8%. In the 70s, we saw a decline as we came off the Vietnam War. In fact, in 1979, we actually saw in Hampton Roads, for the first time we had this data, we saw population, a year-over-year population decrease. And then we had the 80s war on terror, and suddenly we're back up to 1% growth rate with respect to population. And then the war on terror subsided. And then we had the, sorry, the Cold War buildup was in the 80s, not the war on terror. And that's where the 1.8% was. When the Cold War buildup subsided, then we had the war on terror. But as you recall, there was no personnel increase with the war on terror. And when there was no personnel increase, we didn't see associated population in Hampton Roads. And so actually, in 2018, for the second time since this dataset in the 60s, we saw population decline in Hampton Roads from 2017 to 2018. But we've had very slow population growth since. If we look at a population histogram in Hampton Roads, if you remember back to third grade or whenever they showed us these, it's supposed to be in the shape of a pyramid. It's certainly not. You can see if we look at the generations here, but you can see the boomers, where they fall, and the Generation X, and then you get the echo boom with the millennials, especially in Hampton Roads with respect to military personnel coming into the region. And then across Hampton Roads, there's a lot of places that are struggling with, there's very few kids actually coming up through the system. So in some of our localities, they're trying to figure out what they're doing with their empty schoolhouses that used to be bustling.
Ship them up here.
Well, so if we look at that, James City, I just threw a couple of these in, that dotted line is James City County. So James City County's experience is certainly not necessarily the same as Hampton Roads. These are population growth rates. And you can see the U.S. is a black line and Virginia's an orange, Hampton Roads is a green. The county's experience has been significantly different. Since 2007, there was certainly a decline, but that's not expected for James City County's future as it is one of the areas that is poised for growth in Hampton Roads. And even if you look at the county's population histogram, this is even much less, it doesn't look like a triangle at all. But what you'll see there, that's really interesting, the county's median age in the county population is fully a decade older than Hampton Roads average. So there is certainly an older population that lives here. But there's a subcomponent of that where a lot of families are coming up into the county because the schools, high-quality schools is going to attract families, and families are going to locate here to get their education. And you can expect to see more of that in the future. So just really quickly, looking at the year ahead for Hampton Roads, economists always have two hands. On one hand, we expect strong defense spending, at least through September, and even after that. But we have a budget bill that goes through September. After that, we're going to need some bipartisan agreement there to carry that forward. But 2018 was a strong year for Hampton Roads. 2019 should be as well because of the amount of funding there. There's strong consumer spending. We're expecting to see an increase in wages. Corporate profits are really good. You know, I think people have forgotten about $4 per gallon gas, but we have low energy prices still. That could easily pop up, but it continues to be a good thing. We've seen continued national growth, which is very important to us. On the other hand, there is a growing risk of recession. National home price deceleration is happening. There are global trade tensions, which could pose a threat to continued national growth. That coupled with a European slowdown. We've suggested that interest rates should be rising for years. Well, the time has finally come. They actually are rising. And one of the biggest problems for Hampton Roads is divided federal government. If we look at, this is civilian employment, those blue lines are recession years. People keep asking, when's the next recession? So typically, we have recessions every 58 months, so just shy of five years at least since World War II. Around every 58 months, you get a recession. We're 115 months now between, since the last recession. Of course, the last one was a doozy. And I imagine that we will easily surpass the 10-year record that we had in the 90s. But it does give people pause when they're looking at this. If you start talking to, people are predicting the next recession is going to hit within the next 18 months. It's upwards of 50% now, economists are predicting a recession in the next 18 months, which could hurt us. One of the other things that points to this, this is kind of interesting, since the recession, I have never seen a consensus forecast that is pointing down. That is new, that has happened in the last two quarters. This is significant because one of the things that we've seen, if you go back to 2011 there and you look at the federal budget deficits, you know, we popped up there, we grew, we accelerated, but we did so essentially on the credit card. We gave tax cuts and we spent a lot of money and the economy has looked great. But at some point, it comes time to pay the piper and we're going to start running them to Washington, having to deal with these federal budget deficits that are in order of magnitude of a trillion dollars. And if we can't get agreement there, then last time, you know, we shot ourselves in the foot with sequestration, we might expect the same thing to happen the next time. And that does not bode well for Hampton Roads. So that's certainly an area of concern. So if we're looking to 2019, again, I said 2018 was a good year for Hampton Roads. I think 2019 is going to be a better year. If we look at the national level, we expect the real GDP to slow a bit from the previous year. Interest rates are going to come up just a little bit, continue their upward trend. Gross product in Hampton Roads, our forecast is 2.2%, which is the highest forecast we've had for gross product in the past decade. Civilian employment growth, we expect to continue and maintaining low unemployment rates there of 3.2%. Retail sales, we expect to continue around the same rate, 3.4%. Auto and truck sales are kind of an anomaly. Usually, they're an indicator, but right now, prices are going up, vehicles are lasting longer, people bought quite a few vehicles years ago. And so we're just kind of seeing the slowing in the purchase of trucks and auto sales. And finally, the single-family building permit of 3%, that's off a really low 2018, which is off a low 2017. So the 3% rate really isn't that high. But essentially, our forecast for 2019 in Hampton Roads is we're expecting it to be a really good year. 2020, we're expecting it to slow following the nation. And beyond that, we recognize that we probably will be struggling. I think one of the things when I look at this, you know, I showed you population in James City County, and that deviates significantly from Hampton Roads. But the economy in James City County is very much tied into Hampton Roads. Over 50% of the people that come into work in James City County come from outside the county. And almost 60% of James City County's residents who are employed work elsewhere. So it's just something to think about. Hampton Roads and James City County are intricately tied together. That completes my formal comments. Be happy to answer any questions. See you, Mike.
Appreciate it, Greg. Good report. He's given it us before. And when we heard it the last time, every year, he brings his forecast forward. And it's always a lot of information that, you know, we're always questioning, what do you think is going to happen? What do you think that's going to happen? Appreciate you coming out and sharing that information with us to kind of give us a light at the end of the road a little bit to see where we're going. And start, you know, as we always do, start worrying about what happens in 2021? What do we need to plan for now that will possibly be a slowdown in 2021 so that we keep all our employees employed? And what do we do as budgets come up and look forward to 2021 being a slower time than we have now?
Were you able to get a copy of the presentation?
Absolutely. So you believe one has been sent to county. There's one on this computer right here.
We'll get it.
Mr. Stevens, I'll make sure he has.
And if there's anything more in-depth that you may need, you know, we can get ahold of Greg and he can, you know, supply. If you're thinking, I'd like to have a little more information on how this came about, you know, let us know because they're more than happy to assist us, anything we need and help us gather.
Absolutely. And you can always email me too, directly at that email address there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Any other questions? Just got to go to last night.
Thank you, Greg.
My pleasure. Appreciate it.
Next is our preparation for review of the county's 2015 adopted comprehensive plan for 2035, leading the way.
Here we come. Switch over here on PowerPoint. Add some our team in.
Pardon me? No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Rosario, who's in charge here?
Oh, it's absolutely.
Absolutely, Mr. Rosario. Very good.
All the way.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. As you know, we are approaching the four-year anniversary of the adoption of the comprehensive plan, a time when we typically begin preparations for the five-year review mandated by state code. Today, we'd like to highlight two major efforts. The planning division has underway to prepare for the five-year review. First, the citizen survey, which has traditionally preceded the comprehensive plan review activities and which is scheduled to begin this spring. And second, the anticipated framework and timeline of the review, including the new consideration items and the priorities of the planning commission. It's our hope to answer any questions you might have regarding these efforts and to get final direction from the board before staff proceeds with the associated next steps. Before I ask Dr. Thomas Scuderbach and Dr. Kate Wood from the University of Virginia Center for Survey Research to walk us through the proposed survey and then help us answer questions, I'd like to relay a bit of history about the survey and the important role it's played. The county first conducted the scientific citizen survey with the William &amp; Mary School of Business in preparation for the 1997 comprehensive plan. It was so beneficial to have the quantitative representative data to pair with qualitative in-person opportunities for input that we decided to integrate it into our process for the 2003 comprehensive plan and to do so on a larger scale. So beginning with the 2003 comp plan, and again in 2009 and 2015, the county contracted with the Virginia Tech Center for Survey Research to do a phone survey of more than 600 randomly selected households. The survey gauged citizen satisfaction with county services as well as county opinions, citizen opinions on important land use and topical issues. Because the survey questionnaire has largely remained the same over that time, we have gained insight not only into citizen opinions, but also into how these opinions have changed. Staff, the community participation team, and the planning commission working group have all found this information valuable throughout the process as a starting point for more in-depth citizen engagement, as a reference point for policy considerations, and as documentation for decision-making. Although the Virginia Tech Center for Survey Research is no longer open, we are delighted that the University of Virginia Center for Survey Research can take on this effort for us, updating the questionnaire while ensuring a sound approach, comparable data, and a detailed analysis. To talk about that more, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Scuderbach.
Well, thank you very much, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having us here. Kate and I are delighted to be able to work with you, and it's been really great to work with Tammy and Alex on this already. We've done some work together and they're really terrific. We, I wanted to commend you on having a citizen survey. You know, it's not something to take for granted that we actually ask the people what they think. And you get a lot more accurate data from the survey than you can from the usual suspects showing up at the participation opportunity. Kate and I have both been doing this for a very long time. I started the Center for Survey Research 30 years ago. I'm on the faculty at UVA in sociology and public health, but spend most of my time helping people do scientifically valid surveys. Kate's been working with me almost from the start. We, our mission, we like to say, is to give voice to the many. However, Mr. McGarren, I'm sorry, I don't have a way to give you your voice back today. We help governments, organizations, and researchers to measure what people think. And the idea is that that allows them to serve their communities more effectively. So we're involved in every aspect of survey research, helping people design questionnaires, collecting data, and trying to do, we're known for our objectivity and our accuracy. And although no one has an exact count, I've probably been involved in 600 actually paid survey projects for the center, as well as all the other ones that never got funded. So we started back in 1988. We originally were in the College of Arts and Sciences, but now, since 2000, have been part of the Welton Cooper Center for Public Service, which really fits better with our mission. We fit very well with their mission to help Virginia make life better for people by having better government. We have a lot of experience with complex multimode and multi-sample project designs. And we've done a lot of work with local governments and the state agencies. So this is familiar territory for us and we're excited that you've chosen us to help you. Turning now to what you all need in James City County. As Tammy said, this is data designed expressly to be used in the comprehensive planning update. So it does include citizen satisfaction, but also includes land use issues and other related issues that have to be considered in the comprehensive plan. Of course, our job is to give you statistically valid, methodologically rigorous, a survey so that you have high-quality data that you can have confidence in. We will do the analysis and prepare a written reported results, including comparisons to the previous surveys. The previous surveys, we're going to be, we're doing, proposing to do surveys by a different method, but we're hoping to preserve comparability nonetheless. And we'll be back to present results to you once we get to that stage. So what we're proposing for this year's survey is a mail survey. And when you do a mail survey, you don't just mail out the survey and wait for it to come back. You have to have several mailing, several approaches to each household. So there'll be a scientifically valid sample of all households in the county, a sample of those households. They'll get an advance letter saying, hi, we're going to be sending you a survey soon, please watch for it. Then a larger envelope arrives with the actual paper questionnaire and the return envelope that comes back postage-free. We send them a reminder postcard that says, thank you for sending it back. Oh, but if you didn't, would you please do? And then if they still haven't sent it back, we are tracking who returns it and who doesn't. So the non-respondents get a second packet with a questionnaire and a more urgently worded cover letter. You have not sent a survey, who's due? And you may wonder why we not continue to do it by phone? Well, our lab started as primarily a phone lab. We had set up 20 calling stations and did all kinds of random digit dial surveys, like the one that was done last time by Virginia Tech. And we've had to adapt to changes in technology. And without any disrespect to my colleague Sue Willis, who ran the survey lab there, they didn't adapt and that's why they're not still with us. And we've had to adapt to changes in technology. And without any disrespect to my colleague Sue Willis, who ran the survey lab there, they didn't adapt and that's why they're not still with us. So mail offers some great advantages, but the big disadvantage about phone surveys is that the response rates are really going through the floor. They've been declining for years. I'll show you a slide on that in a second. Because the response rate is lower, the cost is much higher. So by proposing a mail survey rather than a phone survey, we're saving you a great deal of money. But mail surveys also show consistently good rates of return. So we actually get a higher rate of return from a mail survey now than we can get from a phone survey. So for a phone, with a phone survey, you pay more and you get less. And so that's why we're going here. Just to illustrate then our experience here, these are results from two different surveys. The blue line is a survey we did for the resident community survey for different occasions. You'll see the downward trend in response rates, starting at nearly half the households responding, going down to less than a third. The second time series is actually more comparable to what we would have to do here. This is our survey, a citizen satisfaction survey we did by phone for Loudoun County. And by the way, in 2019, they switched to paper and that's why they're not on here. And you can see that we went down below 10% response rates on these. When I started in this business, an interviewer on the phone would get two interviews an hour. And now we're lucky to get one in two hours. It takes four times longer. And then the response rate, instead of being a healthy 35 or 40%, is down to less than 10% in phone. So it's really not working well anymore. But we're not just doing phone. We're going to offer an online option as well. So people can do the survey. If they don't want to mail it back, they can do it on the web. And Will, you'll see in a minute, we call this a mail-forward design. That is, we first offer the mail option and then if they don't do that, they get an offer to do it on the web. We'll tell you a little about, a little more about that in a second. So these days, I think people just expect a web alternative when we mail things up. People say, hey, can I do this on the web? Most people prefer to do it by mail, by the way. We love it when they do it on the web because it saves money, saves postage, saves data entry. But people, when given the choice, nine out of 10 will do it on paper. We will track responses and remove any duplicate completions that might happen if someone mails it back and does it on the web. We'll be able to tell that.
Is it sent to a particular household member?
We like to use the name of the person in the household. They'll simply say to the McGarren household or current resident. We don't want it be forwarded to Montana if they moved away. So that's why we say our current resident.
But not a particular, not a particular one like Jane rather than John? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, no. It really goes to the household, a person in the household.
So you only want one answer per household?
Yes.
Versus John and Jane?
Right.
Okay.
And we have, we actually haven't discussed this, but we may be adding something at the top that asks them to pick the person in the household who's had the last birthday, which is a way of randomizing within the household. So we may, we may do that. Or that, that might slightly lower your response rate. So it's a bit of a debate whether to do that. So I just wanted to point out that why are we not offering both? Why not give them the choice right at the front? Well, there's a lot of research on this, which shows that actually that, for some reason, lowers the response rate. It's better to offer one mode first and then come up with an alternative if they haven't responded. If you compare the first line and the last line there, this is our own experiment with this, with the survey we did statewide for the Department of Conservation and Recreation. When we offer mail first and then offer web later, we got a 24.4%. This is the same questionnaire, same population, split-half experiment, exactly the same conditions. But if we offered both at the start, we had three points less. And you see that in all of these cases, they do mostly on mail. The web, when we offered web first, nobody did it. And then when we mailed, okay, some of them did it. And we ended up with a much lower response rate for that option. So you might say, oh, we'll save a lot of money if we do web first, you know, we might have all that postage. But there's a big, that's not the right way to go. So this is what we suggest you do. The timeline is fairly tight. Tammy is driving us hard. But we want to, we were at the work session today and in February, we'd be ready to roll in March. The survey questionnaire is in its final stages of preparation with some input from you. So we'll launch in this coming March, this coming month. It takes six to eight weeks to be in the field. It won't take the full eight weeks here, I think. We'll wrap it up at the end of April.
Well, the commitment was to have results by the end of May, actually. And given where we are right now, where the questionnaire is in its final stages, but not finalized yet, and we go through the institutional review board process at the university, which they review anything that has human subjects in it. So our respondents are humans and so we have to go through that process. That can delay us. So this is, this is a pinch. But I've talked with Tammy and she thinks if we are into mid-June, that that's going to be okay. And so, yeah, it's collapsed, but it's doable.
Yeah. And the preliminary draft results will be in the hands of staff in May. So if they have a number they really need, they have something to go on. It won't go public and be final until June. And that's really all that I have and we're ready for any questions you have.
We think you've seen a draft of the questionnaire.
Yep.
Right? So you've seen something that looks like this in your electronic materials or in paper. So any questions that you have, be happy to get in.
I have a couple with the questions. One would be, I wonder if we could do it by districts? What district you live in, in James City County? And just have a question, you know, what district do you live in? And see where we might be getting more response in one district than the other. And it may be up to one of the board members to, you know, it would be the next survey to go out and start riling your people up and saying, hey, look, if you want to be involved, you have to get these in. And it may give us a chance to interact with the citizens and, you know, have a little competition amongst ourselves. Hey, you know, pile of tan, get terrible.
We've been there and done that with a board or two. And yes, you've learned a lot from that. It can also get you in kind of trouble because if you've got one district where people are a little bit less happy and one district that's more, you just have to be prepared that that might be some of the complications.
But practically, we have discovered already that the way we're sampling is by postal address. It's called an address-based sample. And that, those addresses come to us with the geocoordinates and we can know which supervisory district you're in.
Okay.
Because of voting rights, each, the size of every district is equal.
Right.
That's, I mean, they were at least originally, they were drawn. Now it's been 10 years later.
Yep.
So we'll have roughly equal numbers who are approached in each district. And without asking them, because we are going to know who responded. It's a confidential survey. It's not anonymous.
Right.
Anonymous, you have no idea who responded. Then you'd have to ask. But we can, we can simply analyze the data by district and then we can make a decision about whether that's a useful analysis or not.
Can we nail that down? Meaning that a lot of Williamsburg addresses, they're not in Williamsburg, they're in James City County, but in this district, but maybe a St. Williamsburg zip as two or three other districts?
Yes, and it is very specific to the address. We get right down to the census block.
Okay.
Census block. I mean, we know that we're nine digits in.
That would be, that'd be really, just to give me, you know, where, you know, the concerns are and where we need to try to push more information out to, as you know, we may not be getting as much information. Not, we're not, but maybe the upper end of district where Sue and I are, maybe they're not as in touch with what's going on down here as maybe some of the other districts are. And try to, you know, get that information out there. I'd also like to see if we could do on 2A, I'd love to know born here. You know, just to know how many people are, you know, in the survey that were born here. We have more that have come here.
You just want to find out who your, who your family is.
Yeah, that's right. All my relatives.
Yeah, we had, we had something like that and changed it. But actually, the, another one of our surveys had the born here, come here.
Yeah, not necessarily the come here, but just the born, just to see how many. And then, and then we could almost measure, you know, the people that have been born in James City County. Are they dwindling down or the newcomers now are they building up? Because, you know, somebody born here yesterday is born here. Kind of give us a.
They have to be 18 years old to take this. So they were born yesterday, they're not.
That's the way they say more years. And only one in the house. Junior, you don't make it.
Yes. I just had some concerns and, you know, this is my first time being on this end of it. But to me, it just didn't, it wasn't very realistic because it's asking, you know, do you want this? Do you want that? But there's no talk about how that's paid for. It's like, are you willing to pay higher taxes in order to get that? Are you, you know, there's, there's one question about schools. We just seen us have this discussion earlier today. We know that we've got all this school possibilities coming down further, but there's no question about, do you support more schools for more people, you know? And so that's, that was something I was interested in, but didn't know if this was the right spot for that or not. But yeah, I mean, I, that's what I was looking for, was just a little bit, there's a lot of, you know, I did see where you asked about the developers paying for more sidewalks and that kind of thing. Sorry, I'm trying to get, provide public amenities and da-da-da-da-da. But then you ask about purchasing property development rights. And I think that's important, but there's also a cost there. And so how do we find, get that information on whether people are willing to pay for that?
I think in my previous survey, we actually did ask about that, didn't we?
We did.
Yes. In the last survey, there was how important is it to you? And how willing are you to pay for that? Would you be willing to pay additional taxes? But I think in the discussions that we've had with county administration and other departments, you know, previously, we used the survey as a catch-all for comprehensive plan issues and strategic plan considerations. I know there's an intention later on to do a follow-up survey for strategic plan-related items specifically. And that's where some of those priorities and willingness to pay sorts of questions were planned to go.
And I think that's probably been the evolution, at least as staff discussed. I think what's changed from last time to this time has been that adoption of the strategic plan, that, that other series of public engagement pieces that's designed to be that bridge in between the comprehensive plan, which is that 20-year vision and your operating budget. You know, the strategic plan is really about the things that the board should be looking to fund within the next five years. And, you know, some of the elements we had in there this time, cumulative impact studies, upgrading the fiscal impact model, pulling those just because they're the ones that I know about for our department. Those, that's how that sort of made that transition into the budget and where those funding priorities really came from. So, you know, I think the idea under this comp plan survey was that within a fixed amount of space, because we are going to, in the short term, follow up with an update to the strategic plan, have more citizen input as part of that, that we could have the room in this document for some of these longer-range, big-picture questions and kind of get at some of those more targeted, i.e. funding-related questions as part of that strategic plan output and outreach.
Which I appreciate, but I don't think, how do you get that across? I mean, that's a lot that you just said. And so how do you get that across to people that are filling this out? And then how quickly is another survey coming out? Because I don't think you're going to get the same response. If you, oh, I just filled out a survey. Oh, this one's different. I mean, I'm just trying to be realist. I hear you. That's why I asked the question about, and I don't like the answer. But, you know, I just think that there's got to be some oomph that all of this may not be possible. And I don't, I don't know how you get that across without.
Well, some of, you know, not, in terms of this survey, it's new to me. Our history with this one is Paul and Tammy and Alex and I have talked about, because I wanted more information too. And then we talked about through our strategic plan of coming back with another survey later, meaning in the next six months, so not, not years from now. In this sampling, you're not hitting every resident.
That's right.
Correct? It's a percentage of the community. In our strategic plan survey, we probably would try to get a broader base and have questions that are a little more addressing some of what you're talking about. And this one, we were trying to limit it to a certain number because if you start adding the questions you sort of want to ask to know, then all of a sudden you have something that gets you way out of the planning side and the comprehensive planning piece, more into quality of life issues and your tax rates. And so we took out some of those. We didn't take out a lot, but we didn't, at least the guidance was not trying to add to those types of questions in this particular survey. And so you may hit the same households, but I don't know that you necessarily would. I don't, we haven't had that conversation of a pro and a con of surveying the same group of people. I don't know. The data that comes back here may be helpful in analyzing some of the questions we might ask in the next one.
What's this sample size?
Oh, we, I have to look. I think we're mainly to about 3,000.
I think it's 3,000. With, with the thought that we would have a final N of cases for slicing and dicing and analyzing, 7, 800 to 1,000.
So, and then that brings back to Michael's question because individual districts will be pretty small numbers.
Yeah.
I wondered about, sorry again, a particular service, which we've been discussing a lot, is solid waste and recycling, which are likely to be important questions for us to make. Will that be on either of those surveys, would you imagine?
Hasn't come up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be on the strategic plan survey. I think we'd get more into the recreation, we'd get more into your property development, we'd get more into your services we're providing. I think that would be driven more in your strategic planning survey than on the comp plan. I think you get into a lot of questions you would want to ask as a board of all of those types of things that would take it away from the comp plan. At least that's what I heard talking with Tammy and Paul about why this survey, historically, we've sort of asked a lot of similar questions and tried to have that comparison year to year. And we have had, as Paul mentioned, some of those quality of life things because we didn't have another mechanism or we weren't doing a separate survey. But our intent this time is to do something specific to those items.
Two school questions are listed here. One of them is about facilities. Wouldn't it be important to know whether the respondent has children in the school system as opposed to?
We will add that.
That is.
We, we realize that was missing. I mean, that you're going to need to know.
And don't you always get a lot of people, you know, the vast majority of people saying they want more career and technical education? Is there really a point to that?
That's not a question that we've asked a lot.
Well, you may not have asked it, but I've seen the answers.
You've seen the answers another million times.
And every community everywhere in the world says yes.
I also think that it doesn't take into consideration that we do have career and technical opportunities here with New Horizons, which most people are not, they just are going to say, very important, but they don't, now, we can agree or disagree whether that's the best fit. But we have something. So I think people are going to, oh, well, we don't have anything because they don't see it. Now.
And the place where the rubber really meets the road between us and the school system is on facilities, which I think is probably where you want to focus attention when you start getting into curriculum.
Yeah, true.
That we're getting into.
And I think y'all are both hitting on something there. Does the, and you've been on the school board, you can advise us. Does the, does the school board do a survey like this to find out what their citizens are, you know, on that side of it?
Lee, now you're asking me to dig back.
I know, you got to go way back.
Yeah. I mean, I know that there's been surveys on calendars and, I mean, I would think individual schools' survey is part of their, part of their school improvement plan. But I don't know, I really can't remember about career and technical.
I was thinking about that and I was thinking, well, that would be a good thing for the schools to do as well in conjunction with what we're doing. Maybe the school board does certain ones that apply just to the schools so that we can, you know, start housing these underneath the planning and school and comprehensive plan and, you know, put them into, into categories where we can kind of eat this elephant a bite at a time.
I want to just throw out an idea for later, not, not for right now, but we have done surveys using a fancy technology where you ask citizens to judge which of two things is more important. And that's something everyone can do very easily. It's, it's hard to say, how much should you spend? But easily say, you know, vocational education is more important to me than more running trails, you know? Say, no, no, this is more important. And then the computer rotates these things. So everybody looks at maybe 15 pairs of things, but across many respondents, you're actually getting everything balanced, they get everything else. And you come out with a really clear order, rank order priority in your community for what they want to spend on. So that's a possibility you could think of for later.
Mr. Rosario, if we're sort of getting a consensus of the, it sounds like maybe there would be an opportunity to. would be an opportunity to swap out the B7 if the board isn't, which is that wanting that more career and technical. If you're, if you're not wanting to necessarily see that same trend in these results, that would open us up a slot for a question that we could work with the superintendent tomorrow on to, to get at a different question for schools and...
Well, not saying B7, but there's, we can't create the career and technicals. That would have to come from the school board to us as a budget question.
Sure.
Not us creating the career and technical spot, so...
Sure, Thomas Nelson too.
Yeah, right. So that would be a better question for them. And to be honest, I mean, I think Supervisor Ripple brings up a great point. I don't know when the last time or if they surveyed some of this, so.
That could be an opportunity.
Yeah. For them, you know, starting to make it bring us information. We're seeing this. These are our surveys and this is what we're seeing is, that's why we're asking for A, B, and C. And this is the backup for, I think it'd give us all a clear understanding. How's it going to bridge?
Y'all want us to do that?
That sounds...
That's easy.
Ruth, do you have?
Sue.
It's okay. I'm good.
All right, you two, you...
Yeah.
I will say that when I first scanned through here and through the survey, mind you, just scanning, I had to go back and reread. It's probably, I guess when you're going to be sending it out, just black ink is the cheaper way to go. But I just wanted to make sure that people understand what they're being asked to respond to. Now, please tell us how satisfied you are rather than, do you want this or do you don't want? You know what I'm saying? Just to...
A couple, can I respond on that? Just one of the things that you guys, I would like you all to know is that this is a, this is a draft of the survey, but it's not, it's not well put together. It's not formatted the way it will be. We do use some color and we do use shading when we're, we're doing, when we get them ready to send out. It makes a nice booklet. It's a nice booklet. And that's when we make sure that the instructions are clear and lined up with the, the questions the way they should be and that kind of thing. To your second point about the, the two grids, the B1 grid and the B2 grid, we had a lot of discussion about how to, to do that and how to frame it because it's actually the same list of items. And the first one is how important you are. And there's a way in which at the, at the last, that, that question asks, how important is it for the county to put resources towards it? That's a really soft, gentle way of saying, is that worth your tax money? So it approaches that. It doesn't ask, are you willing to pay more taxes? But it's approaching that. And we will be able, from looking at this list, to rank for your citizens, which is the most important thing. And all the way down, rank, so we'll know.
Excuse me, what if they don't interpret that as a soft, gentle way of asking about their taxes?
Well, that, you know, that's, it's, what we're asking is importance, importance. And then the second one is asking satisfaction. How satisfied are you? And so then what we think we can do, and what we've done in the past, is to look at what the gap is between that. Are there things that your citizens are saying are really important? And they're also, by the way, very satisfied with them. That makes you really happy. That's an A plus on the report card, right? I mean, it's, it's highly satisfied, highly important. When you get to something where they say it's important, but they're not as satisfied, then you've got sort of a, a place where maybe you want to put some energy and, and work. So the, the taking these two grids and putting them together is, is a really interesting analysis task and comes out with very rich data. Your point about making sure that people understand what they're being asked in these two grids and the difference between them is our job. And we, we are still working on that and we've discussed it and appreciate your comment because it's, what you're saying is that we're not quite there yet. It, it doesn't, doesn't quite, it's not quite as obvious as we want it to be. So, so thank you. Thank you.
And then for the, the 3,000 that we send out, can we divide those since we know geographically where all the, you know, divide those into each district? Because it's such a, you know, big, vast difference between one side of the county and the other as far as, you know, the people in the rural lands think one way and, and the urban area thinks a little bit different. And I'd like to hear from how they tie in to the two of them and, and see the diversity we have in the community.
Well, I do, we can do that, but I do want to say that if that were your really important goal, you'd have to have a larger survey. And so we budgeted, and within the parameters of the previous survey, your last survey had 606 respondents. So we, we're going to give you a little more than that. We're expecting, we can't prompt, we, by the way, don't guarantee, we don't guarantee responses, but based on prior experience and, and the, the character of your county, we don't think your county's a hard one. It's not like we're dying to Manhattan, right? Where nobody wants to talk to you. So, but if you want to have a more robust statistical analysis of area by area, you need a bigger N than we're providing. So that this is, we can, we can give, what it means is that when you compare those areas, you can compare them, but small differences, you know, 3%, 4% is not going to be a significant difference. You could, but I would say, so what? I mean, I think you, the big differences will be, if it's a 10% or 15% difference between this district and that, that will be...
I think that's probably what you're, you're aiming at, to see where the, to see where the larger disconnects are, if there are any larger disconnects between the districts or, you know, rural versus urban. And I had only one, one concern, and I, I do appreciate the fact that you're going to be doing the summary of how it compares to all the previous ones because that trend line on some of these questions is what's been very, very important. When I first got on the board, we were doing the comp plan and development was the big issue. And the questions about, it's happening too fast and we were eating up all our rural, rural farmlands and, and, you know, creating condos were two of the, the big driving issues. And what we were looking at from time, from one time to the next was, what was the trend line on that response? And it was actually increasing every, every year. You know, more and more people were saying, this is a problem. Sort of implicit in that, because at that time, we did not have the strategic plan. And I would tell you that in my opinion, the board didn't necessarily connect the comp plan to the budget. You know, so a lot of folks would be saying, in essence, you're not listening to us. We're telling you that this is a problem and it gets increasingly larger as it goes, but we're not seeing from you the appropriate response. And so that's one of the things I have a concern about is making sure that when we have these, we have the benefit of that trend line information to see, see how, and I don't know whether it's a, that is worth a, a question in its own right of asking, how satisfied are you that your elected officials are listening to you on this? We may get, we may get some pretty interesting feedback on that. May get something you don't want to hear. That's right. Found me. Well, I don't know how easy that'd be to work in, but that's...
But I guess my only, there's things that have already come down the pike that we have no control over. And that are still to come that we have no control over. And so it's not that we're not listening because, or, you know, how, it would be more, did you feel like 30 years ago, nobody listened to you? And...
Well, over the time period of 2006 till about the recession, the board approved about 6,000 homes. And that was pretty much in, not what they were hearing on the comp plan. Now, the recession solved a lot of that for us. And we aren't quite back to that, that problem yet. But it'll be interesting to see, is that, is that opinion about the speed at which things are happening still consistent in our community? Personally, I think it might well be, but I don't, this will be, we're going to do the survey to find out. And I could see with Ruth's point because some of the things are out of our control by rights.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Why did you let that subdivision go? That's by rights. They don't come to us. They're one in three. They were able to build the subdivision. And, well, they should have come to you. They should have had something you, you know, so certain things are, you know, if you follow everything and everybody thinks everything comes in board, we control it all. And, you know...
Horse is out of the barn.
Yes, it is. So, but yeah, I would definitely like to make sure that we cover, even if we have to send out more, that we cover the districts equally because, you know, if you, if you cover, you know, if, if you've got 2,000 in Newtown and then spread 1,000 over Port City County and, and our districts, Sue and I get 100, you know, then it's, it's out of balance.
There's just a little something different. I'm a little worried about putting too much connection between the survey and individuals on the board at the moment. We're really looking for more general...
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean that. I just want to spread it.
A question which asks people what kind of a residence they live in, whether they're living in a, you know, multi-family development or rural community with, you know, three acres or single-family subdivision in a suburban setting, something like that.
Yeah, I'm not worried about where they live. I just want the survey to be out where they live. I don't, it doesn't matter to, you know, I would love to, I would love to know the...
People who say they live in rural areas.
Yeah, I'd love to know those, but it...
Right, but you can do that by asking them what kind of an area they live in.
Well, they, yeah, they've already said, we can give you that by the geo number and then, okay, this is where, we can do that without asking that question.
Right, but suppose you get the geo number...
What's typical in other counties that I've worked with is because of exactly the debate you're having, the choice is to, to compare areas, but the areas don't necessarily correspond exactly to supervisory districts. That does seem to have a, a political dimension that may not be what you want.
Yeah, I think what we're more interested in is, if you will, rural versus urban.
Rural, urban, that's it. South, north, whatever, whatever those divides are.
Yep.
And that's easily done. And that can be done by zip code, for example. That's something everyone can understand easily. Or if you need to, where there can be a more direct geography.
Cool. Thank you.
Do you do the survey for a lot of other Virginia localities?
The, the honest answer, sir, is that we used to. And then they got to, we got too expensive and people started doing other things or not doing the surveys. And people have been moving away from strictly a satisfaction survey to more citizen engagement and comprehensive plan and the kind of thing you're doing here. But we've had a lot, Kate and I have had a lot of experience out in Maricopa County, Bedford County, Loudoun County. I did 13 years straight for Prince William County. So we've had experience with these.
That said, the downturn in our local government business really paralleled with the recession and the crunch in tax dollars that you all are dealing with. And things are easing up a little as we consider, there's two things that are happening for our business. One is that the tax money, I think, is a little looser, but there, there was a, an inexpensive way to do this that some counties chose to do with colleagues that we know quite well that are, are competitors though in Colorado. And what they're finding is that they're not getting the information that they want and they can come to us and spend a little more money, no question, but get the information they want.
I was really just wondering if there's an opportunity to compare our results to others if they are publicly releasing their results of surveys.
We don't offer that capability. It's possible...
I'm not really asking you to do it. I just wonder if there is, if it's out there.
It is. You can buy it.
It is, you can buy it. A couple of, actually, Tammy, I think we had a conversation about that because it comes up. Or actually, I was with another client that I had this, this very conversation with because there are organizations that will do benchmarking. The problem is, I mean, there's a couple of things. What, what do you get when you compare your results on a satisfaction survey, for instance, with Kansas City, Missouri? Or with another, you know, maybe Manhattan, Kansas might be better for you because it's a, it's got a university there. But you've got, there's so many things that differentiate our localities from other localities and it's really hard to make sure that you're comparing apples and apples and not apples and oranges. The other issue that, that we found as part of the Cooper Center, years ago, we looked into doing this, that was this something that, that we wanted to pursue, being able to do a benchmarking comparison with other localities within Virginia because that was mostly where our business was. And our then-director, John Thomas, said he would not support that because he did not want to be in a position of, at the Cooper Center of having us put out data that was one locale could use to compare themselves with another locality. And so he was wanting to avoid the political issue there. And so we didn't do it.
And you have this, you have self-benchmarks. You have now years of data, you have, you have, you're using the same questions. You can see exactly what's up and what's down. And that's really what's important, I think, is what you're improving or failing to improve in those important areas.
The most important comparison, and I've said this to other clients on this issue, the most important comparison is you with yourself. You benchmark with yourself. You compare where you are today with where you were five years ago or where you want to be five years from now. And then you use that.
Oh, I'm asking to shorten things up, but I would be remiss if I didn't add that in Did not help us really think about policies, particularly to James City County and land use issues in particular. And I've found it very hard and so did the community participation team to extract data from that to help us, you know, in our comprehensive plan.
Yeah, but I did find it useful because it's the ICMA, right?
Yeah.
And, and so it was giving me a sense of, you know, is it just that everybody thinks everything's lovely here and every community, they all think everything's lovely? Or is there a real distinction amongst some of these things? Different purpose.
It's, it's useful. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for all your time.
Thank you.
Tammy, you have, you have what you think you need from us?
Yes, I think for survey...
Okay. That's what I want to make sure on the survey. So, sorry. Let's press on.
Thank you. Good over, see? Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Transition to, to come up some of the priorities and some of the topics.
Yes, the second half of our presentation is dedicated to the overall picture, the anticipated timeline, framework, and scope for the review to give final direction from you before we head off to next steps. For context, I thought it might be helpful to look at the historic triangle. Although we generally coordinate with Williamsburg and York on our five-year reviews, our timelines for our reviews are slightly different. Williamsburg and York, you can see where their earlier adoption date started theirs at their five-year marks, so in 2018. And with two-year reviews, it looks like they'll be wrapping up in spring of 2020 or summer, fall of 2020. Since we had a later adoption date, ours is a little different. We're also getting started a bit earlier with some of our pre-work in the next few months. And so we'll actually be starting a year earlier than the, those localities at our four-year mark. We're looking to also have about a two-year process, starting officially in the summer, fall of 2019 and ending in the summer, fall of 2021. What will this look like in a little bit closer view for James City County? Well, as you know, we kind of see this process as a huge funnel where we first start with community input and agency input, do our background research and studies, and then get our planning commission input and board input along the way. And our process will reflect that. We're going to start this spring with our citizen survey and meeting with our partner agencies and divisions. Moving into the summer and fall, we'll get our community participation team formed and start planning that community engagement. Spring and summer of 2020, we'll really move into the plan formulation phase with our planning commission working group meetings. And then by the summer and fall of 2021, we hope to have the planning commission reviewing that draft plan and conferring with you with the board adoption of the plan. We're proud of the collaborative effort that's gone into our past comprehensive plan reviews, the citizen engagement, the fact that it's relied upon document. And so some of these components that we plan to have this time will feel familiar. We hope to use the robust public engagement approach of our past plans as part of the foundational element as well as... foundational element, as well as groups such as the community participation team leading that effort, using it to help formulate a vision, and the planning commission working group, leading the charge through the plan formulation. We plan to have a continuity of vision, using the growth management framework of the existing comprehensive plan and our connections to adopted plans such as the strategic plan to propel us forward. We also have guidance from state code, a laundry list of items that we must review and include in our comprehensive plan. But there are also new considerations. There are a number of new state code mandates ranging from sea level rise and recurrent flooding to broadband infrastructure and surface water availability. And then there are funded strategic plan items that you, as the board, have instructed us to consider during this comprehensive plan review, ranging from the cumulative impact analysis to scenario planning and to refining our fiscal impact model. To better understand and anticipate other issues that might arise in this process, planning staff conducted two sessions with the planning commission earlier this year to assess their priorities. There was a good amount of good discussion and a voting exercise that resulted in a list of items for consideration. In your packet, you receive the full list. What I'm going to highlight here are items that received majority votes. To review the purchase of development rights and other conservation programs to protect our rural character and to see where there's overlap and opportunities. To review the economic opportunity designation and, on a parallel effort, the zoning district. And to relook at the economic opportunity areas outside the primary service area. And finally, to consider undertaking small area plans, particularly for Grove, perhaps the 143 corridor and redevelopment in Toanna. All of those received majority support from the planning commission. So as I mentioned earlier, today's goal is to get a sense of the board's priorities. And final direction, as we launch into this effort in earnest, we will use today's discussion as a launching point for conducting our survey, reviewing an historic triangle transportation study that's a backdrop for our transportation section. We'll be advertising an RFP and selecting a consultant in the next coming months. And we'll be working toward finalizing our methodology for the proper launch of this comprehensive plan effort. Finally, the summer and fall, as I mentioned, that's our formal start time with our community participation team, which we will engage with you on formulation of that group and community engagement efforts. So with that, I'll see if you have any questions for us? Is there any directional items? Any thoughts regarding the planning commission's priorities versus your priorities?
The question I have is, with all of these steps that you're going through, what is your plan on, you will periodic updates or coming back to the board like work session to say, all right, here's what we've got, you know, we've got this part.
Absolutely.
Are there any tweaks? I mean, is that, have you, have you set up sort of a schedule of that? Or is that something we're just going to work as, as things go?
Well, I think it'll be a bit of both. We have already anticipated check-in points with the, with the board of supervisors at milestone points in the process. And of course, we'll revisit that as we go along. And, you know, I'm sure Mr. Stevens will let us know if there's particular interest from the board. And likewise, if we feel that things need to have a connection point with you, we will ask for a work session.
Other questions?
I know with, and Paul knows, with sea level rise and all the, PDC's doing a lot of work on that, so Bob might be, you know, might save you some time and get the information from him of what that group's put together and speed process along.
Absolutely. We fully expect to engage with HR PDC and HRTPO and leverage, and VIMS.
Yep.
Leverage those resources.
Get all you can get.
Yes.
You know, that is one that we're not going to have to spend local dollars on because some of the other localities, and I think working with the planning district commission, you know, what the level of work that they've done is covering that new state mandate for inclusion in the code. So, you know, again, we don't have any Cs all by ourselves. You know, James City County said the work that they've already done to cover the region covers our need as well for that. So it's a good resource to start with.
It is. And by, you know, by us being members of that group, it's, it's saving us money in long run. So, you know, it's like all the other things that we're involved in, you know, each one saves us, you know, saves the citizens money. So, you know, usually we can, you know, utilize those funds.
Same thing on the TPO side. Last time, they had done a, a regional look at traffic. And we've engaged them again to update that previous study.
And anywhere we can use them.
That's right.
Let's do it.
They have that local context like no one else.
Yeah, that's right.
Like Mr. Green doors today.
Would you characterize this as a minor or major? We used to have that kind of distinction. Is that applicable in this case?
From my perspective, it's a major update. We have not only significant staff resources invested in this, but you've also set aside good consultant dollars for us to take on some major initiatives.
Okay. And I guess I'm going to be curious about how we can advance the effort to incorporate many of our policies in ordinances, something that we had begun to work on a couple of years ago with the passage of the proper legislation.
Yeah, that's kind of slid down the list a little far, but I want to push them back up.
I think, I think because it's a major update, because we don't have some of those tools, you know, we're, we're trying to kind of frame this up to, to really better understand some of those details. We really want to conceptually think about doing a visual preference survey, but really trying to understand what makes us that great place so we can build upon the things that we're doing well on, making sure there's no gaps in the tools to make sure we can continue to do that. And like I say, just to kind of learn from those best practices about what sort of the next level we need to go to preserve our community character. You know, also new this time that I think will be paramount in the citizen engagement pieces is, you know, again, sort of pulling from those goals that you all have as part of the adopted strategic plan. I mean, making sure that the vision stays aligned with that, making sure we get into what we're doing to make sure we stay aligned with those goals, make sure we're not losing perspective of those. Thing is just going to help really round out the conversation this time.
And I don't know about my colleagues, but, you know, I'm going to lean toward the more involvement by the board along the way.
Yeah.
Side of the spectrum, because I hate to get into a situation where the planning commission is run ahead of where the board wants to go. And then you run into a situation where you're trying to figure out how to fix that.
It's, it's a good point. I think it's very clear that we, we definitely need to be more be engaged in this so that we, we can make sure that we're headed in the way we want to go. Any other questions?
Okay. Without anything additional, then we're going to take the items that were on the slides today and move forward to the next steps.
If you guys don't mind, I need about two minutes.
Okay.
We'll move to the next item. Catches up with us. There we go.
Mr. Chairman, I hope this is a fairly quick one. I know Bill Porter had started the conversation with Thomas Nelson about a year ago, talking about location for Fire Station Six, talking about the opportunity to, to get the land, opportunity away behind the law enforcement center. It's about 20 acres, as Jason's got up there on screen for you. The college is on the right side from the law enforcement center. It's that property behind it that's sort of, you know, directly behind the law enforcement center. Our conversations, Chief Ash and I met with representatives a month or so ago. The college seems to be inclined to donate that property back. You gave it to them in, I think, 2007 timeframe. The local folks were very supportive of it. They don't see a need for the college here for the next 75 years. They've got their plan on their side of the street planned out, so they don't need that property. And I believe we have the state board that is willing to, based on their recommendation, grant it back to the county. So they did ask for a resolution saying that the board would like to have it back. So unless you have questions of us, that's what Adam's got prepared for you this evening to consider.
Need a motion?
You have a motion?
Okay. Nope, nope. Discussion?
Oh, no, we'd love it.
Motion for approval?
We'll take it back, yeah.
We have a motion for approval?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, yeah. All right. So that takes us down to board request and directives. Anybody have anything that they want to?
The only thing that I had was, I was just hoping that we might do another, our ass staff, if they could go back and see if there might be a better way to work with the school system so that we're not getting into a situation like we've gotten into recently where we're asking, you know, what's, how many are coming out? What's the number? I mean, I don't know what that is, but, you know, if there's a way, because I'm frankly curious as to when we okay something and they say, okay, nine kids are coming out. Well, how many really do come? You know, so that we would be able to have that information. And I know it's fluid, I mean, certainly, but, but just, is there another look see that we might do as far as developments and what potential children that might bring up? And do we look at every multi-unit the same? We certainly wouldn't because some are over 55, you know, that kind of thing. So I just wondered if we might regroup and.
Sure, well, let us talk about that and we'll see what we can bring back to you in terms of methodology and involvement in the school system, make sure we're giving you as accurate of information as we can, even though it's projections, right? We're making assumptions about what a development's going to look like and how's in it. But certainly, we can have that conversation and bring it back to you.
That'd be great. Because one, one thing I was interested in as well is that there was a development that was, that has been mentioned that sort of sat there. So does the school always carry those numbers forward? I don't know. I mean, can we find out? Do they always carry those numbers forward? Do they let something go if they haven't seen it? How are they doing those projections as well?
Okay. I think that goes to the core of essentially the enrollment projections that are done for the school, the methodology. Because I don't know whether that takes into account what we've already approved or not. You know, I mean, it almost sounds like we're talking apples and oranges because what we're doing is we're just looking in isolation at a particular community, saying, okay, on the average, this type of house generates this number of kids. It may, your, your individual community may be above it, it may be below it. The school's looking more at the long term, at the thing. And like I said, if we, if you build out the whole county, you'd need 50% more schools right now.
Well, and I'd also be curious as to, are they looking at older neighborhoods that are turning over? Where, that we know, or as neighborhoods, how do they look at those? And do they consider that now, I mean, do they look at something like, I'll take my neighborhood where last year there were three kids at a bus stop, this year there's 10 or more? You know, are they, how are they figuring all of that or are they not? So I'd be curious to know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else for request directive? Good. Okay, everybody's good on that. We have a closed session settled with consideration. I think we can probably do it. Sue, are you willing to be our representative on the Eastern Virginia Regional Refra, which is the one that's going to deal with our, I think that.
Well, it's a joint.
Yes, it's a joint.
Between work and city regional effort, so for economic element.
Because I think you talked about that before as being potentially a, the EDA chair and our rep to the EDA is being sort of the same.
Do they meet how often?
Oh, they, they only meet as required. I think it's, they're going to be talking.
I don't think it'll be.
Every six months.
That's right. I don't think it'll be.
Yeah. We're not looking to put a whole nother workload. We also are going to have to, I believe, nominate alternatives if we want to nominate the two for this evening. We can get that out of the way and then we can come back and do the alternates at a later time. Because I believe they're planning on doing a meeting in March.
Correct.
So that's why we need to get our PowerPoint East.
Okay.
Okay. So do I have a nomination to?